Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, I'm reconvening out of open session and I'll do the report out of closed session since our board clerk is not here tonight. On items five, E5, E6, and E7, we will be discussing those at the closed session at the end of the open session tonight. Item E8 is on the agenda for item M24. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any adjustment to the agenda? Hearing none, superintendent's report.
Yeah, kinda nice to be up here for the first time, so I appreciate the faith that the board has taken in me to lead the district into the future and very excited about that. I have a little bit of sad news to report as I can see that everyone can probably observe that Wendy's not here. Unfortunately, her mother passed away. The services for her mother were today. As a matter of fact, I attended those. It was a nice service for her mother and also wanted to acknowledge that Hank's mother-in-law passed away here very recently since the last board meeting and attended those services as well and very sorry for your loss as well, so. On a lighter note, my kids are attending the district next year, so they're very excited to start school at Washington and Zane and looking forward to having my kids in the same school district where I work. That's a first for me because I kinda look at it as I get to double dip a little bit. I actually get to attend their events and be working at the same time, so I'm excited about that. I attended the cheer camp that was put on by the JV Cheerleaders over here the other day at the high school and that was fun. I don't, I won't say why I attended. I guess if I do, that would be self-admitting that I'm a cheer parent. We have lots of good cheer parents out there, though. And then, wanted to bring your attention to August 21st is the Welcome Back to School Meeting where all staff will be over at Eureka High School in the auditorium. We're starting at 7:45 with a continental breakfast and then at 8:15, all proceeding over to the auditorium. There'll be about 400 staff potentially there. And I see, I say potentially because classified hourly staff, some that are not on track yet, are voluntarily, if they want to come or not, so potentially we could have up to 400 people there and looking forward to that. Invite you all to come over and watch me speak for a few minutes and address the district. We've been having our administrative meetings this week. Those have been going very well. I presented on Tuesday and we had all of our leadership team here, including psychologists and guidance techs and classified managers and had a good day. Today, LeAnn presented, Mrs. Lanning presented, and Mr. Ziegler presented as well and I think it was well-received also. Been enjoying the last month and a half that I've been in the district and really looking forward to school starting though because that's what we're here for as the kids and I can't wait to get inside some of the classrooms. And speaking of that, there's one more announcement I need to make. I think I saw her out here someplace. Angela, are you out there someplace? Oh, hiding in the back. Angela, if you could stand up for a second. Angela Scholl is our new principal at Lafayette Elementary School. Angela, just to give you a little bit of history, is a local of Humboldt County. She graduated from a high school in Humboldt County, which will go unnamed at this point, and is very much looking forward to moving her family back to the North Coast. So we're very excited to have Angela coming back here. She was over in Cottonwood, I believe it was, prior to coming back here and they're very excited over at the Lafayette staff to have her, so welcome to Angela.
Are there any board member reports? Hearing none. Public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. The reason for this is the Brown Act. No significant discussion can take place on an issue that has not been properly noticed as public. Also, as printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to 20 minutes total and we have a light system on the podium and yellow means you have one minute left and red means please try to stop. I have one green sheet here from Sarah Maninger.
Hello, I know many of you. My name is Sarah Maninger. I teach at Washington Elementary and I'm a little nervous, I haven't been up here before. And I've got my stuff right here. So I wanted to take this opportunity to say welcome to Mr. Maninger.
Thank you.
And thank you for your welcome letter that you posted on the website and it helped me to, it inspired me to follow through with coming through here because, up here today to present to the board because I was planning on coming in June or July and it didn't happen. Was waiting for some books to come in, but I think what you said in your letter was you wanted to convey to Eureka the confidence in our schools and in our staff. And I'm here to share a book with you today that I feel kind of embodies that confidence that we're wanting to get back. So let's see. So I'm here to share a book today. One of my dear friends is a superintendent in Mendocino County and she, last year, she shared a book with me and she had given it to all of her staff in Mendocino to read for the summer. And we shared time in the Sierra every summer. We hike and we talk shop and talk family and it's a book that I read many times, or many times, a few times last year and have just really taken it to heart. I'd like to encourage you to read the book. I know we're asked to do lots of reading. I think if anything, I'm gonna pass it out to you guys. There's the very beginning, it's in a nutshell, it's called Educating for Human Greatness by Lou Stoddard. And at the very beginning, it has the purpose and in a nutshell, it's about three pages and then he expounds about everything. One thing I've been called during my career is idealistic and optimistic and I think, I hope I am most of the time. I've also, I'm also very contemplative. I was on, I was absent on a sick leave about a year ago and had a lot of time to think about my teaching career and what brought me to teaching and how to really hold on to my passion for teaching. And this book has really inspired me to do that and to go to the core of why I became a teacher and what we need to do for our students to help them be successful. So during that time, I thought a lot about, like I said, what my students that I've had in the past and how I've helped them, hopefully how I haven't hindered them. I thought a lot about the stress that this job brings on and how stress leads to illness. And then I questioned, you know, what is our approach with our students and are we doing the right things? Are we doing well with our students and the wise, are we being wise about our approach? Oh, three minutes is up. Anyway, the author talks about how he knows he might be seen as idealistic, but I really encourage you, if you can stick with it, to read it and you'll see why his principles for educating for human greatness are really essential to success in our system and success for our children. And I did buy enough copies for everyone, but I gave two more away this summer, so I'm waiting, I'm waiting for two more copies. If you only read it and it just inspires your own thoughts. I'm just, I've got it for the board members.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
And since Wendy's not here.
Oh, I was gonna give.
Since Wendy's not here, I'm gonna give.
To look at.
You want, and then I have two, Conning Rich. And so, anyway, it's a gem and I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the book and I'd also like to say thank you for being such a wonderful teacher to my daughter. She still talks about you and she's 20 years old. She loved you.
And you're an amazing parent volunteer amidst your nursing and parenting too. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Hearing none.
John, Rosalina would like to speak. I know you, she's a household reporter. Go ahead. She's got her little green card with her, so, or sheet, not her green card.
Hi, good evening. This time it feels good to be here to thank these men who are here to help us to believe in our schools and childrens and parents and our principals. And thank you very much again and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Any other public comments? So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Any questions or comments or items to be pulled?
I'd like to move for the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item M24, student expulsion, student number 11-12-013. And resolution 12-13-002. Do I hear a motion?
As soon as I find my sheet, I will do that. I move for the student expulsion of student number 11, 12, 013, resolution 12, 13, 002.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. M25, elimination of classified positions.
Move for the approval of M25?
Second.
The only background I just wanted to give on that real quick is this was a one-on-one aide and the student left from the district, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. M26, lease-leaseback preliminary services agreement for Lincoln and Alice Burney.
So this is a draft of the RFPs for the lease-leaseback for both Alice Burney and the Lincoln campus. We developed these along with a gentleman by the name of Konstantin Baranov, an attorney that we've been using who specializes in these things. In essence, what the RFP would allow us to do is to go out, to put this out through a selection process, select a contractor to work on, to work with us on either of the two projects should we choose to move forward with them. I'll say that there's no commitment on the organization's part, even if the RFPs go out to move forward with any or all of the portions of the projects, but at the very least it would allow us to queue somebody up and to start working with them on potentially value engineering some of those projects. So if and when we were at the point where we were able to move forward with the projects, that is, if and when funding became available, we would have that and we'd be able to react very quickly. It's quite likely that the way that the state is working on funding right now, that they would come to us with a very short timeframe to say, do you have your matching funds and your plan ready to go? And by selecting an RFP or by selecting a partner through the RFP process to work on a lease-leaseback, it would allow us to be ready to roll quite quickly if and when the state came to us with that particular pronouncement.
I want to thank you for the background information that you provided because I didn't know what it was and it was very, very helpful and very clear.
Thank you. So is this one RFP for both projects or two?
There would be two separate RFPs, but we proposed to send them out at the same time so the selection committee could potentially interview the same set of contractors if they were interested in the lease-leaseback and potentially could select a single contractor for both the projects. It's also possible that we would look to two different contractors if that came down that way.
Would you elaborate a little bit more on this selection committee? How it's formed, who's in it, and its scope and duration?
The committee would likely, and we haven't necessarily put it together, but would most likely be Dr. Van Vleek, myself, Charlie Bettini, who is our head of maintenance. We would likely bring in the architect who worked on the project. In the case of Lincoln, that would be Mark Gaxiola of Mattson Valerga, gentleman by the name of Gary.
Mallory.
Gary Mallory, who helped us with the Alice Burney proposal, perhaps some other folks that could sit on that committee from the district. In essence, what we would do is we would review the qualifications of the potential contractors based on their experience, their familiarity with the lease-leaseback process, their ability to do some value engineering of the projects, and then through, you know, through setting up that criteria, would select who we wanted to be our partner going forward.
In that process, that partner moving forward, would it necessarily, that partner, would they be responsible for actual construction or putting together the construction package?
They would ultimately be responsible for the construction. So we would, in essence, be hiring a contractor at that point to work with us, to, again, do the value engineering, help push the plan forward, as opposed to a bid process in which you're saying, here's exactly what we want, tell us how, you know, how much you can do it for. It would be a much more collaborative approach.
Those explanations that you made earlier were very helpful. Thank you.
Further discussion by the board or by the public? So we need a motion?
I move that we accept the proposal for the lease-leaseback preliminary services agreements for Lincoln and Alice Burney.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion is carried. M27, refinancing of the general obligation refunding bonds.
Well, we've talked a lot about refinancing our general obligation bonds. It has been a long, drawn-out process, to put it mildly, but I am very happy to report it's done. The transaction is closed. Ultimately, we were able to, through the refinancing of portions of the two general obligation bonds, save our taxpayers roughly, and I'm gonna correct the numbers that are in here, about 2.1 million in overall, in present, present value savings. Made a little addition error in here, so take my word, it's 2.1, not 2.2, but I think it's a really, a really great thing that we've been able to do for our taxpaying base and the community that supported us with the original bond initiative. So that present value savings of 2.1 million far eclipses the number that we originally talked about when Mark Epstein of California Financial Services came to us back in November or whatever it was of last year. We were looking at present value savings of just around a million dollars, so we were almost, we were able to more than double that number, just kind of a combination of good timing and I'll say good luck as well and also I think probably a really good stewardship and on the part of the district and Mr. Epstein did a fantastic job helping us through that process, so. I think it's a really, really positive thing for the community and I think it's something that we should talk about with the community as well.
That's kind of my question, is there a plan to really do some PR, get some mileage out of this to let the community know?
I've been talking with Mark about putting together a press release, at the very least, but I think it would be appropriate to get your thoughts on that. If there's anything in particular you would like us to highlight or any particular things that you would like us to do to get that information out, more than happy to do so. From my perspective, we would like to inform the media in all the different ways that we can because, again, I think it's really great news to be able to share.
What it would actually do is to decrease the amount of taxes that the people had to, that our people have to pay, right?
That's correct.
So I really think we ought to, that's a lot of money.
So the savings over time is actually more than 2.1 million, but if you look at it on a present value basis, we're put differently. It's almost like a reduction of principal, but that's the, that's the real dollar savings that we're looking at for folks.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just like to hear that word again, 2.1 million.
2.1 million, John. We'll say that as often as loudly as we can, so, yeah.
So a press release or whatever you guys think is best.
The only thing that I would add to that is there is no benefit to the district by us doing this. It's purely a benefit to the taxpayers.
Right.
It's, it's.
Correct.
Property taxpayers and we feel that our obligation is sound fiscal advisors and protectors of the taxpayers to do everything we can to be proactive in saving the money when we can and this was just a great opportunity to take advantage of the current climate with interest rates out there and save some money.
Is there actually action required by the board tonight?
There's no action required, no. So we, in essence, did all the formal stuff upfront. John had some papers to sign, which had been done by a resolution previously allowing both John and Wendy and myself to sign the final and closing documents, so we're good.
Great.
Great.
I'll look forward to seeing it in the Time Standard, in the front page, almost as much as moving a principal.
I'd like to see it on television, too.
Yeah.
Okay, M28, revised local education agency plan for 2012 to 2015.
Getting our PowerPoint up and ready? Let's be just a very brief overview. The school board is asked tonight to discuss and adopt the revised local educational LEA plan for 2012, 15. And I'd like to give to you a copy.
Oh, you're gonna give.
That's good. Right there is good.
I just want to also thank Rich for his flexibility, Dr. Lentz, excuse me, for his flexibility in coming in here because this was originally planned for the study session and so it wasn't designed to come out. That's why it says "board study session" on there, but we're gonna present it now in the interest of carrying on and getting this thing through the process tonight.
Would I ever come to a meeting without handouts?
No.
No.
You're gonna have a party when you do.
So I want to make sure that you have in front of you the materials that we'll be talking about.
And thank you.
This has been a long journey, the LEA plan. Okay. Slide number two? Thank you, Paul. So just a very brief overview of where we've come from. As you know, in, at the end of last year, because of our student performance results, the school district entered program improvement year three in November. The State Board of Education took action with us and 54 other school districts in the state in a similar status, moving into PI year three. The fifth cohort of districts to be moving forward like that. And the school board took action on those 55 school districts called corrective action and this is part of the no child left behind accountability that the federal government requires the state to take corrective action with districts who reach this point in their student performance history. So the action was to require that we completely revise the local educational agency plan and meet certain other mandates required by the state. One of them in particular is to begin to implement the new common core state standards. The, just a little bit about the LEA plan. We have had one in existence since 2002. It was mandated by NCLB at that time. It has been revised a couple of times since then, but on this occasion, it, in the previous year, two years ago, 2010, we were asked to simply submit an addendum, but now we were asked to rewrite the entire plan. Beginning in October, the people who were involved in this effort, curriculum committee, principals, cabinet, the district English learner advisory committee called DILAC and district advisory committee, DAC, which, we have a group that met with a superintendent once a month called the Superintendent's Advisory and they have functioned as the district advisory committee for us for categorical programs. During that timeframe, there were needs assessments that were conducted, discussed, people responded to prompts, provided information, we filled out charts, we wrote a lot of notes and so a lot of information was collected. February through March, and there's a little bit of overlap in the timeframes, we continued, worked with curriculum committee, principals, cabinet, DILAC, DAC, and so during this general timeframe, results of the needs assessments, results of the formal survey tools provided by the state were looked at, analyzed, priorities identified, and draft action plans were shared out with different groups and comment solicited. Next. April through May, again, roughly the same groups of people and finally, now you might recall that we were intending to take action in April. The original directive from the state was that we had to submit by March 9th, which we did. We were supposed to hear from them in March and then we were supposed to have action taken by the school board in April. They didn't actually get any comment to us until May, so finally, in May, we received their feedback. We had to add some more action plans because what they found is that we didn't adequately address needs of special education kids and there were a few other mathematics, materials and intervention that they needed added to the plan, so I got some assistance from county office of education staff. We added in those action plans to meet the state approval and now we are at the point, yes, at the point where we need to move ahead. We would like to get the adoption by the school board. So the, along the way, one of the key things was to identify priorities. Working with stakeholders, we were able to identify a set of eight priorities and they are shown in your PowerPoint slide and handouts and these enumerated are in priority order. Principals and cabinet went through a process to place these in order so that... Principals and cabinet went through a process to place these in order, so that number one is the top priority, number two, second priority, and so forth. These are based upon the state mandates. The state is mandating that we take on a lot of actions, and we felt the need to prioritize those so that we could properly allocate the funds that we have available, because we don't have enough funds to do everything the state is asking us to do. We don't have enough funds to do everything we want to do. The, getting the input from our curriculum committee, from principals, there's a lot of wonderful things that we can think of to improve student achievement, and we just can't do them all. And so, the priorities will help us to prioritize how we use our money. So, you can see those. And I don't see a need to review them unless, I would like to pause for a minute and let you ask any questions about those priorities.
I do have one question. So, what you're saying by what you have up here in priorities, we've all seen the thick binder that has the LEA plan in it. How do these priorities relate to all that stuff that's in that great big thick binder of the LEA plan?
You'll find these priority actions in that binder, in that plan, and I did bring binders with me, which have the complete plan, if you would like to look at those in the detail. So, each of these priorities have one or several action plans in the LEA plan to implement the priorities.
Okay, and so, what you did was you sat down with the stakeholders you identified earlier to look at that and develop the priorities in this order based on stakeholder input, then?
Based on stakeholder input, yes. These are the priorities for what we take on, what we allocate time, resources, and money for. So, essentially, number one is teacher collaboration, use of data teams. Number two, comprehensive, consistent district-wide approach to response to intervention. Number three, training on data systems, use of data systems, format of assessment, et cetera, to guide instruction. Number four, implementation of common core state standards. Five, district support for positive behavior interventions and support at K8. Number six, provide professional development for all staff to meet the needs of high priority students. Seven, system for early identification of student needs and for making sure that all kids are served appropriately and moved on when they are ready. And eight is continue to support our teacher leaders working with pacing guides and benchmark assessments. There is, if you are interested in that timeline, you recall there were three slides that gave roughly three broad groups of time, three chunks of time. I've got a detailed timeline, if you're interested in taking a look at that as well. I can hand that out if you want to go into that a little bit more. Finally, the last slide shows you the district leadership team, the slide, which, the last slide? Thank you. It's kind of hard to read, so I'm glad you've got the handouts. This is adapted from a state model that, the intent is that we will convene a district leadership team to continue to monitor implementation and continue to make adjustments in the actual activities themselves, or to make adjustments in how we use our resources, our funding, which includes, the district leadership team would include the superintendent, assistant superintendent for human resources, educational services, chief business official, instructional coach, selected principals, teacher leaders, director of information technology, parent reps, and bargaining unit representatives. And it would be the role of this leadership team, district leadership team, then to, actually to dive into that binder, dive into the content, and try to understand it, and monitor what's happening in our schools, and as I said, to make adjustments along the way, and to reset priorities as needed, and make sure that we're funding things as needed.
So, from my understanding, you submitted this, as you said earlier, once, and the state got back to you with some revisions that needed to be happened. They were late in getting those revisions back to you, beyond the deadline that this was originally supposed to be adopted, so it was late, as it was. Now, if they were not late in getting that back to you, when was the target guide, the target date that this was supposed to be adopted by the board by?
In April.
In April, okay. So, what happens if the board chooses not to adopt this? Who's saying that we have to adopt this?
We have, well, the state of California says we need to adopt it. That's part of the requirement. We've got to adopt this plan, and we've got to post it on our website, and we have to implement. And then, we have to make reports to the state of California twice a year. The first report will be due in January, a report on our implementation, how well we're doing implementing the plan, and how well we're using the funds. We received a $150,000 grant from the state, and of course, if we...
So, is it just the grant funding that we risk losing if we do not adopt this plan?
No, if you take a look at, we, it would be, well, yes. What we would risk losing would be the $150,000 grant. That's right. Looking at the budget spreadsheet there, I call out the budget at a glance. I recall the last time that I came to the board, there was a request to see the budget. This is a summary of it. The first, if you look at the major areas covered, the left column, all students proficient in reading and math, it's all part of what the state calls goal one. Goal two is English learners becoming proficient in English. And the third is safe learning environment. And the columns indicate the proposed funding sources. You have district categorical and PI, that's program improvement grant in the first column, district general fund in the second column, site categorical funds in the third, and additional recommended activities, which are in the last column, are basically, they're unfunded at this time, which are activities that we had to put in the plan because of state mandates or because of some priorities that were expressed by one group or another, and yet, trying to make everything fit, we just don't have enough money to do all of it. The safe learning environment, is that PBIS, basically?
The safe learning environment, I am happy to give to you, yes, that is, but I want to give you a little bit, just a touch more detail.
No.
Do you want more? Is PBIS good enough?
Yeah. It was just a question.
It includes the PBIS, it's 76,000, and a portion of the grip coordinator, 27,000. And that's, that comprises that 103,000 you see there.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
I would like to ask a question about the PBIS K8. Do we have any kind of a program similar to that in the high school? Or is the idea behind this, that they started in kindergarten and each, you know, as they get older and older, by the time they get to high school, hopefully, all of these things are in their systems?
There is a very similar program. Mr. Jordan operated, in his previous work before coming to Eureka City Schools, he was very familiar with this program, the PBS, slightly different approach, and has introduced many of the same elements to Eureka High School. So, there is some similarity, but it is not exactly the same program as put forth by the same consultant, Dale Myers, who was guiding the work at K8.
I understand that, but there is something at the high school that's similar to it, that carries it on, because I think...
Not nearly as much detail that is in place at the elementary and coming forward in the middle school. It's a little, in many ways, a little less appropriate to do it in that kind of detail as the kids have gotten older.
Yeah, right.
But we definitely have had pieces in place and are going to continue to build on some of the basic tenants.
Good.
Ron Perry is going to be doing some of the training with the group this fall.
Because it seems to me, as a student goes, starting in kindergarten, hopefully, it carries over from year to year to year to year to year, and hopefully, eventually, we won't need to have it at all.
PBS stands for?
PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. It is an adaptation of an earlier program, which was PBS.
Public Broadcasting System.
So, what we need today, correct, is an adoption of this plan by the board?
That's correct.
Correct.
Questions or discussion? By the board or the public?
I move that we adopt the revised local education agency LEA plan for 2012 through 2015.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
In 29, board protocols.
Mickey, did you, were you able to get a copy of those out and right in front of us? Oh, there we go. Excellent. Does everyone have this in front of them? Should have pages eight through 15. There's a little bit of a handwriting note on page eight, and a little bit of handwriting on page 15, as we discussed in the study session and the all-day session that we had back in...
July 31st.
July 31st, thank you. So, this is representative of what you all discussed and decided to put forward as your protocols. We're not going to be discussing pages one through seven at this point, because those aren't specifically dealing with the protocols, but we'll bring those back to a study session in the future where we'll talk more about those. So, with that, I would ask that you adopt the protocols that you all came up with as a board.
Questions, comments? By the board?
Make a motion that we adopt the protocols.
Second.
Board governance protocols.
Spin a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Both calls are accepted. In 30, state budget update.
Did that's the, this was one that was a replacement for, that she sent us on the email. Yeah, I can't remember what it was, but it's on, it's on one of the board policies on conduct. Yeah. And it's down here under...
Well, thank you. I'd like to provide a little bit of an overview of the state budget. And this presentation, the majority of the slides here were taken from the presentation that was provided to us a month or so ago in Sacramento by School Services of California. Dr. Van Vleek, myself, and Patrick Riggs were there, representing the district, and heard kind of the update of the state budget and all the wonderful news that's happening out there. So, we'll go ahead and take you through that now. One of the major themes for the school finance and management conference really did talk about both the history and the impending cuts if the November ballot initiative does not go through. So, I'll set the stage a little bit and then take you through some of the numbers here. Please do stop me if you have questions, because I'm going to probably keep rolling until somebody stops me, so. 2012-13 represents the fifth year of sustained cuts to public education in California. And we've all felt the effects and are continuing to feel the effects of that as we go forward. Those cuts to education mirror the loss of funds in the general fund. And put differently, the state continues to balance the state budget on the backs of education. We represent the largest part of the state budget, education does, and therefore, when the governor and the legislature need to look at a way to bring the dollars back into balance, they tend to continue to look at education. As a result, we have taken far larger hits than the rest of the sectors throughout the state, and with the looming initiative in November, we're looking at another potential very deep cut. During that period of time, we've lost more than 10% of our teachers and even greater percentage of our classified employees and administrators. We have higher class sizes, fewer school days, and as I say, there's prospects that that will be even worse as we go forward. Ron Bennett had that last point there, which is managing school agencies has never been difficult, and I think a few of us can probably attest to that as we think about what's in front of us and what we've been through. Talking about the temporary taxes proposed by Governor Brown, a lot of the public confusion surrounding that right now thinks that if the initiative passes in November, that what that does is provide new and better funding for schools. And unfortunately, that's just not the case. That's kind of the way that things are being put out there, and I think that it confuses the public. But really, the bottom line is, and if anybody asks you, you can say, there isn't a single new dollar that's coming to us either out of the new initiative or that we've seen since 2007-08. So, the cuts have been ongoing, they continue to be that way, and yet, our politicians continue to claim that there's more money that's going to schools. In 07-08, we had about 300,000 teachers in the state. At that time, already had the highest class sizes in the nation. In 2012-13, our teacher cadre has dropped to about 250,000, so 50,000 teachers, less than we had five or six years ago, and yet, our class sizes and our overall enrollment statewide continue to go up. So, you can see that, if we were to chart that, enrollment's going up, teachers employed are going down, and that's causing the additional friction and causing our class sizes to continue to increase. And that is certainly not the recipe for success in education, nor doing the best job that we can for our students. You can see it here, just in the dollars and cents. The top five states in the nation spend on average, and this is for 2010-11, just under $19,000 per ADA. California is about 9,500 per ADA. So, we're spending roughly half per ADA compared to the top five states, and we're roughly 2,000 per ADA below the national average. And this is an all-in funding number, including the federal funding, state funding, and our revenue limit are categorical. So, when you see the 9,500 per, the 9,524 that's there, you can think that that's the entire ball of wax that is going on a per ADA basis to our students right now. Already gave you that number, about 9,000 less per ADA. In 2011-12, California with the largest class sizes, we now have a ratio of 22.2 students to teachers, and that compares for the national average of about 14.7. So, we have about seven students more per class, about 50% higher class sizes than the rest of the nation does on average. So, the state budget is out there, proposed to be balanced with the tax initiative, and that is, in fact, the single largest risk to not being able to balance the state budget is if the initiative doesn't go through for 2012-13. So, there's about eight and a half billion dollars that is on the table that would come into play if indeed the initiative passes. That goes away if it does not. We've talked a little bit about how the trend, the polling is trending out there. When the original initiative came out, I think that we were in the high 60s, low 70s in support of the initiative. We've seen that number dwindle down to the most recent poll, coming in at about 54% of the public in support of the governor's tax initiative. And I would say that there still is confusion amongst the populace and amongst the voters. And it'll be very interesting to see as we get closer to election time and some of these issues really get put in the forefront of the public, how the public reacts to that. Because I think if you were to tell folks that even if the initiative does pass, that education doesn't get any more money out of it, that might sway people's opinions on whether they wanted to devote in favor or against the particular initiative.
Is that to pass? Is that 50% plus one?
It is, yeah. So, a simple majority there. So, some of the other concerns relative to the initiative, the other polling that's out there talks about the high-speed rail project and voters being less willing to support the governor's tax initiative if, in fact, the high-speed rail project goes forward. So, that could potentially lessen support for the initiative. There are competing initiatives, the Molly Munger Initiative that Fran referenced earlier, and we'll come back to that and give you a little bit more detail on that. and we'll come back to that and give you a little bit more detail on that, is out there. So in essence, we have two competing initiatives, and we know from past experience, when you have competing initiatives, that tends to have a negative effect on voters wanting to support either of the two initiatives. We also have the situation with where the economy is right now, sputtering along as it is, and whether it be what's happening within the state itself or any of the external factors, oil price, the European situation, those are other factors that could, in turn, impede consumer confidence. That, in turn, could add to the negative side of the votes as it relates to the ballot initiatives. I'll try to whip through these fairly quickly as well, but the May revision had certain features to it, and many of those have changed, some drastically, some slightly, with the final state budget. And we'll go through them kind of one by one. The original trigger cut called for a $441 per ADA reduction if the November tax measure fails. That number has now increased to $457 per ADA. That increase is due to pulling more money out of the budget to fund other side projects. So as some of those other side projects have been taken care of, the bill to education, if you will, has increased a little bit. Interestingly, we did budget in our adopted budget at a $441 per ADA reduction. So that number is already in our budget, and that is the number that would apply to a unified school district. So by luck or by design, whatever the case may be, the $441 that on average would apply to a unified school district is what's already reflected in our adopted budget. And just to remind you, that number is somewhere between 1.5, 1.6 million. That would not be coming to us if the initiative fails.
So Mr. Ziegler, if we had a $457 cut to our revenue limit, could we sustain that through the 12-13 school year and still remain fiscally solvent?
Yes, we can make it through 12-13.
About 13-14?
We can scrape through 13-14.
How about 14-15?
Now we're getting really dicey.
Okay. And how many years do we have to project out?
We go out three years with our multi-year projections. At the end of our three-year multi-year projection, we have enough reserves to meet the minimum, but our cash position at that point is severely in the red. So from a pure cash perspective, we would not be able to make it through 14-15. In fact, just taking pure cash into consideration, we won't make it through 13-14. So without a trans tax revenue anticipation note, some other borrowing mechanism, we will face a serious cash issue next year.
What about deficit spending?
That's part of our issues. We continue to deficit spend. Our deficit for 12-13 deficit spending is projected right now at about 1.4 million, and that's if the initiative passes. If the initiative doesn't pass, it puts us at roughly a $3 million structural deficit.
So ballpark, what is our total yearly budget? In millions, rounded?
Total revenues, 35 million.
Okay, so $35 million, and we have to cut that 1.6 million or thereabout per year. Of that 40 million, what percentage would you say ballpark is from personnel?
Ballpark, 88%.
Percent from personnel? Do you see any way that we can get around if the state imposes a $457 cut like this in front of us without talking about personnel in some form or another?
No, not at all. I mean, we could cut our materials and supplies budget in half and not make it really a drop in the bucket relative to the deficit that we'd be facing.
So basically, what you're saying is if the state imposes this on us, we're going to have to make some very tough decisions about personnel.
Thank you.
Why we can even last that long is you're using all the funds we've set aside for construction at Lincoln and elsewhere.
No, so in terms of the budget itself, we're not looking at it as a...
Talking about the cash flow, though.
The cash flow. We had anticipated spending out that money, so no, we're not looking to the construction funds as a way to keep us going for 13-14 and 14-15. We contemplated those dollars being gone. I'll also point out that I've underlined the word automatic there. With the last series of budget cuts, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but at the last minute, the hammer didn't come down as hard as it was originally intended, and the per ADA cut was reduced fairly significantly. We don't believe that that will happen this time for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is the law. So it's in legislation right now that if the tax initiative doesn't pass, that $457 per ADA reduction is an automatic hit. Further, when we were at the conference, there'd been a lot of talk, and I think even the experts, School Services of California, School Innovation and Advocacy, had talked about just the devastation that that cut would engender. And there was thought, at least several months ago, that somehow the state would come up with a way, or there would be some last-minute way to pull our chestnuts out of the fire, so to speak. Ron Bennett started off the conference, and it was a very sobering thing that he said. He said, "I no longer feel that way. California no longer has the wherewithal to make those kind of deals or to come to the rescue at the last minute." He feels quite strongly that that $457 per ADA cut would come on in full force. So a little bit of a much different tenor to his comments as we were at the conference than what we've been hearing up to that point and what we had experienced a year previously. Deferrals, if the May revision, we were talking about $2.3 billion to buy back some of the apportionment deferrals. That number is down to $2.1 billion now if the tax measure succeeds. And if it does not, then there would be no buyback of the deferrals. That means no additional cash coming back to us. The instructional year, we had... there was an opportunity to look at 15 days spread across two years. Actually, that hasn't changed since the May revision. So in addition to the five less days that we could take, cutting the school year from 180 to 175, the May revision and the final state budget allows an additional 15 days. So conceivably, we could see our school year cut from 180 days to 160 days. Clearly, that's not where we want to be, but I'll tell you, there are going to be many districts across the state in 12-13 irrespective of the initiative that are probably going to be looking at those kind of cuts. So we're situated much better than that.
And that has to be negotiated with our bargaining unit?
Certainly an negotiable item.
The five days, if it doesn't pass.
So let's see. Transitional kindergarten, the governor had proposed eliminating that. The legislature said no, so transitional kindergarten stays in place, and we're gearing up for that going forward. Mandate reform, and this is really a big one. There's been a lot of talk about mandate reform, and we applaud that at the one level. We spend an awful lot of time with our mandate claims and the like. With the final state budget, the state, in essence, said, "If you will, we're going to give you $28 per ADA, and you don't have to file your claims anymore." For us, that would equate to roughly $100,000. And even better, they're saying, "We'll actually pay you for it. We'll actually give you the cash." Because right now, our claims are somewhere between $350,000 to $400,000 a year. And I think last year, we actually saw $40,000 of it back. So it's a promise. It's owed us at some point in the future. We don't know when. So that's the decision that we're grappling with right now and have yet to come to a final decision. Do we take the money in hand at $100,000, or do we roll the dice, so to speak, and think that there's an additional $300,000 that we might be able to pick up going forward? I'll say $100,000 is a nice chunk of change, and we would love to have that in pocket, but I don't know that it makes sense to take that and forego the other $300,000 that we might be able to pick up. And we're not here to make a recommendation on that yet, so we'll continue to work on it. Weighted student formula basically went out the window. There were lots of holes and lots of concerns with it, so at this point, there is no weighted student formula in front of us. We expect we'll see that coming back in a different fashion sometime in the future. And last but not least is transportation. The governor did choose to fund the home-to-school and special education transportation, but also with the May revision, had talked about flexibility in the use of those funds. So here's your money for transportation. Use it however you want. We backed off that now. We will still get funding for our transportation programs, but it can be used only for transportation.
Is that for just one year, though?
That's correct. That's for 12-13.
Nothing in 13-14?
I think at this point, there's an expectation that 13-14 would be funded, but that could certainly change between now and then. So here's, I think, this says it all, and as well as anything that I can say or all the preliminary to this. And they call this affectionately the alligator chart. You can see the jaws there, if you will. If you look to the far left of the chart, 2007-08, it shows the dollars per ADA that were being paid at that point. That number is $5,821 per ADA. If you follow the blue line upwards, all the way to 2012-13, between Prop 98 increases and cost of living increases, we should have seen that number rise to about $6,748 per ADA. The reality of the situation is, because of the loss of the COLA and the loss of those baseline dollars, what is proposed today is a $5,245 per ADA, but it could get worse. It could drop to just over $4,800 if indeed the tax initiative doesn't pass. So we're going to be losing roughly $2,000 per ADA if the tax initiative doesn't pass, and that's a wallop. Just some quick detail on Prop 30. This is the legislation sponsored by Governor Brown, Schools and Local Public Protection Act. Lots of good support for it, including CTA, California School Boards Association. And what it does is temporarily increases the state sales tax and personal income tax for the high-wage earners. Sales tax goes up a quarter of a percent until 2016. Personal income tax, the increases there would expire in 2018. Conversely, Prop 38, Our Children, Our Future, is the initiative that's sponsored by Molly Munger and friends. PTA is behind that one. CSBA is behind that one. It does some of the same things as Prop 30, but it increases income taxes on more than just the highest earners. It actually exempts the lowest-income earners from the personal income tax. The tax increase wouldn't expire until 2024. And probably the biggest difference about Prop 30... Prop 90... Prop 38 compared to Prop 30 is that the tax revenues would be outside the Prop 98 guarantee, and that revenue would come directly to schools. So that aspect alone may be something that voters will find interesting and attractive, but that initiative is not pulling in the positive right now. It's below 50%. What happens if they both pass? We call this the happy dream. And although maybe not so happy, because if they do both pass, there's contradictory language, and some of the provisions would cancel each other out. In essence, the initiative with the... which received the highest amount of votes would be the one that would take precedent. If Governor Brown's initiative were to pass, then the other initiative would be null and void. So it, in essence, would trump the Our Children, Our Future. Just had to show this because I think it's kind of funny. Here's Prop 98, The Promise. So Prop 98 really was intended to establish a minimum base of funding, which would help the state grow over time so that we could match the top 10 states in the nation in terms of our revenue limit funding. And Mona Lisa, what was proposed, that's what it's supposed to look like, but the reality is... There it is, The Scream of Nature by Edward Munch. So really, Prop 98 has been manipulated to the point that it really just does not deliver the promise that was attached to it originally, and is truly not what voters had intended, I don't think, when that was originally passed. So it's a bit of a sham compared to what it was. The Prop 98 funding, very quickly, I'm going to point to the yellow bar up there. About $2 billion of the $6.7 billion that would be raised or would increase under Prop 98 would go to pay for the 11-12 deferral, the deferral that we saw in the previous year. Another $2.3 billion would be used to buy back some of the deferrals that happened in previous years. So a lot of the monies that are being raised don't generate new revenue. No new revenue is generated for schools, but at least there is a buy-down to some extent of those deferrals. Right to here. The revenue limit is our major source of funding. About $20 million of our $35 million or so in funds comes from our revenue limit. And the chart shows the deficit factor, and basically, that's the discount, if you will, to the full amount that we have been supposed to be receiving. And the mid-'90s, all the way up to 2000, there was a small... I say "small" now. It must have felt like a lot back at that time, but it's all relative. Up to about 10% was the deficit factor through that period of time, was the maximum. There was an evening out through the mid-'2000s as we paid down some of those debts that were owed to education. But beginning in 2008-09, the deficit factor started to pick back up again, to the point that in 2012-13, our deficit factor is about 22%. Put differently, of every dollar that we were supposed to receive, we get about $78. If the initiative doesn't pass, with the trigger cut, that ramps up to about 29%. Again, put differently, of every dollar we're supposed to receive, we get about 71 cents. And that's before the 30% deferral. If you put it all together, we're going to be receiving, if the initiative fails, about 50 cents on the dollar of our revenue limit. Last couple of slides, I think we'll kind of bring that point home. The column to the left is the base revenue limit before deficit. That's the $6,700 per ADA that we should be getting right now. If the initiative passes, based on the current revenue limit deficit, we're about $5,245 per ADA. And to bring it home for us, that represents about $5.3 million annually that we're not receiving, that we should be receiving. But wait, it gets worse. So here it is. Here's the last slide right here, and it shows what happens if the tax initiative fails. The $5,200 or so drops down to about $4,800 per. Put differently, 29% of our revenue is deferred. $1,900 per ADA comes off the table, and that represents about $6.9 million annually compared to what we should be receiving from our revenue limit.
So I have a question for you. As you know, in my past life, I was a CBO, much like you were, and this has been the same grim story now for the past... I would say this is probably the fourth year that we've been going on, talking about these cuts that are going to be coming forward. And I think you touched on this a little bit earlier, but why do you think this is different? Because every single time we've said these cuts are going to come, something has happened to change the game, whether it be further deferrals or the state coming in and saying, "We're going to be able to fund more than we originally anticipated." Now you're telling us that there's going to be a $457 cut off of the revenue limit. What makes this different than the past four years where the state has come in and done some sort of finagling or some sort of playing with... gimmicking with the dollars that are streaming down to the local agencies? So we really saw very little cuts locally. In fact, has even allowed us to bring our reserve rates up to some historically high levels. What's different?
I think probably three factors. One of the years... a couple of years in there, the feds came to the rescue with the RRA funds. So the cuts that really did happen at the state level were offset by those one-time federal revenues. So that saved our bacon that particular time through. There's nothing on the horizon that suggests that from a federal perspective, we're going to see that kind of initiative again. That's one. Secondly, the state, we don't believe, is in any situation, based on the continuing doldrums of the economy, to be able to ride in and provide any additional funding. Kind of, as we talked upfront, Ron Bennett's perspective on that. He doesn't see the state having the wherewithal to make that happen. And last but not least, although we did ramp up our reserves and have been able to do that, due in great part to flexibility, we are seeing that those reserves are eroding to the point that we really can't count on them for future sustenance. So with that, any questions I can answer for anybody? I always seem to have that effect. All right, thank you. I always seem to have that effect. All right, thank you.
Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Has anyone tried to project, whether fictionally or logically, what this is going to do to public education in the next five, six, seven years? And if so, what's it going to do to the state of California? We're going to become much more polarized, the have and the have-nots. I mean, I haven't seen anyone try to put anything out there that announces the fact that we're slitting our own throats. And we're threatening the democracy of the state, the, you know, the security of the state. It's like we're our own terrorists. Who's going to blow the horn on this? I mean, do we need, you know, like a movie of the week made for it, or something like that? I mean, we're looking at the writings on the wall. And we still try to, you know, sort of like, well, it's bad news, bad news, bad news. But pretty soon, it's going to be, I mean, there's worse districts in terms of financial security than ours. And they're all going to start going belly up. So if we wanted to destroy public education, we're doing a damn good job of it. People who have money will educate their kids, but what kind of world are those kids going to grow up in? So I think we've got to get the message out, some.
Yeah, we can't really respond too much to that, as far as taking a side on what's going to happen with the ballot initiatives. What we can say is just stick with the facts, like Mr. Ziegler did here, and what it will do specifically to Eureka City Schools. And specifically to Eureka City Schools, it's dismal. There is no other way to put it, other than that. And it's a state solving their budget problem on the backs of kids in the state of California. And there's just really no other way to put it. We're already funded in the bottom five school, or, excuse me, five states in the United States. And if this cut comes true, I have no idea where that'll put us, but it certainly won't make us a higher-funded state.
One of the things that is starting to, one of the things that's starting to come to legislature's attention, or finally starting to show up on their radar, if you will, is, oh my gosh, if schools continue to go under, in essence, go under state receivership, or you require a state loan, there's a tipping point out there at which the money that they're saving by not funding education kind of goes the other way. And, oh my gosh, the money that we're having to put out to support schools eclipses what that savings number is. And call it eating your, you know, eating your seed, whatever you want, there's, I think the point's well taken.
Well, it's an exciting time to be in public education.
It's not an exciting time to be in anything that's public right now. I mean, I think that it's a classic way to make everything become privatized. We just keep cutting public until we can't run it anymore, and then private company is going to take over.
Okay, so moving on to item, agenda item in thirty-one, Safe Routes to School Update.
I'll be presenting this information, and this is a cheerful note compared to the last one. This is simply a report to the school board on the Safe Routes to School effort that's been in place in the county and in our school district. The task force received word in July that the Humboldt County's routes to, Safe Routes to School grant request was funded by Caltrans. A portion of that will address issues that were identified as high priority at Grant Elementary School in early two thousand twelve. In your packet, there is a bulletin there, Greater Eureka Safe Routes to School Task Force Update. The work that we can expect to occur later this school year, it won't happen right away, but we'll see sidewalks installed at several locations around the school where there are no sidewalks. The crosswalk in front of Grant on Oak will be raised to slow traffic and make students more visible. F Street at Oak will have bumpouts installed at the south side of the intersection, and the crosswalk paint will be increased in size. Also, using other grant funds, City of Eureka's planning improvements on the north side of Oak and H Street. And you've got maps that illustrate the locations and a depiction of the type of improvements that are going to be made.
I want to thank you for this presentation. And I want to say that if this does for Grant what Safe Schools did for Washington, having been a parent or grandparent from out there and suffering through the parking and the dangerous to the kids and so forth and so on, if it does for Grant what it did, has done for Washington, it will be wonderful.
So how did Grant get selected for this grant?
Lori Alexander has been very involved in this, and perhaps she could provide a little more information to answer that question, in terms of how Grant got selected.
Well, they were looking for another project in our parent community. Grant was heavily involved and invested.
Come up, please.
Our parents were very invested, very involved. And so they had started attending the meetings when they heard what was going on at Washington, and brought a lot of folks to the table. And it was actually a year ago in two thousand eleven that we all came together at Grant and spent a full day before school, after school, meeting and looking at that. And that parent community at Grant has continued in that involvement. So we worked with county, the city, and everyone to put together a really nicely designed plan to look at the best options for helping kids arrive safely and depart from school.
So there are other schools in our district that have the same issues that Grant has?
There are other schools that have similar issues that we do, and Alice Burney, and Zane, and let me see, who else is?
Actually, Lafayette, two thousand and eleven, we had a big walkability study. We were actively involved in Safe Routes to School and have a lot of plans in place. But it has to be the next round of funding, because Grant was up and got it.
So I guess the piece that I would be asking you, Mrs. Alexander, is the conversations also being had about those other schools, that there's issues with students walking to school as well, correct?
Yes. And since that point in time, the committee has put together a rating scale to prioritize schools within the county who will be involved in the next round of support and walkability audits.
That's great.
Any other discussion on Safe Routes to Schools? Moving on to item in thirty-two, Board Policy Forty-three Twelve Point One, Contracts.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so this is a optional policy that addresses some specific issues regarding employment contracts for individuals occupying certified and classified administrative positions. It came about for a lot of different reasons throughout the state, none of which affected us, but where certain people were looking at retirement and spiking their salaries, is the common word for it, as well as continually rolling over their contracts without going through an evaluative process, or without having it be in open, public sessions. So I am certainly, you could probably tell, highly recommending that we, that the board, not deny, because it's discussion only, but we bring this back to the board as a consent item. And when you look through it, it's pretty much, all of it is being recommended, with one exception, which is on the second page, which has an optional paragraph. And as we know, when we look at board policies that are being recommended, we can choose.
Which, seventy-two?
It's on page...
Correct, seventy-two.
Seventy-two, second page of the, and it's talking about the extension of contract and reemployment. And I would encourage the board to consider including that optional paragraph, indicating that a contract would only be extended based on performance evaluation, and that we would not ever include an automatic extension or renewal of that contract. And other than that, I, again, support that the board, at the next board meeting, approve this, but open to questions and discussions.
Do these come back?
Yes.
Through, yeah, they come back to us, but they were coming back through the consent calendar.
Exactly. We're actually going to discuss that. That was one of our study session items to discuss. And so, since we ran out of time before the meeting, to start this meeting before the regular meeting schedule, we're going to continue the discussion on that, following the regular meeting schedule, to discuss how you would like updated policy to come back to you.
Okay. I knew it'd come up, but I wasn't sure we'd gotten to, you know.
Are there any questions?
Nope. Good idea.
So it says, "The board may fill certified administrative and supervisory positions of classified senior management on a contract basis." How many positions is that? How many do we have that are on a contract basis?
Are you talking multi-year contract or yearly contract? Because pretty, all of our teachers, this is mainly multi-year contract stuff, and...
This is administrative, isn't it?
Yes, yes. And currently, and I just want to make sure I was clear on the question you're answering, though, because our teachers are actually under a contract, too.
Right.
Just a year-to-year contract. But I am the only employee, to my knowledge, in this district that's a multi-year contract. Is that correct?
That's correct. Right now, we have had other employees on multi-year contracts, and this would allow us to enter into that practice again.
It's very traditional for cabinet-level positions to be multi-year contracts. So, and it's also very common, not as common as cabinet-level positions, but common in the state to have high school principals on multi-year contracts as well.
So at this point in time, the only one we have is yours. And this policy would allow us to extend that to other positions, as you saw fit.
That's, well, we, well, the board, if we did multi-year contracts, they would come back to the board, yes. Yes. So we're not proposing it at this point in time to do any further multi-year contracts. But there, as I said, it's very common around the state, so there's always the potential to have that discussion at some point in the future.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. I heard a general direction for consent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Item in thirty-three, Board Policy Fifty-One Thirty-One, Conduct.
Tonight, members of the board, you have three policies coming before you, which are a result of some new laws passed by our legislature. AB nine, AB eleven fifty-six, having to do with bullying, primarily bullying and harassment. And we are required to update our policies accordingly. The first one, which is Board Policy Five-One Three-One on Conduct. And I apologize for the green sheet that referred to the wrong item numbers. It threw me off when I looked at that first. But the, if you look at the policy, the proposed policy, which you'll find on page seventy-five at the bottom, Paragraph two, that is new, revised to accommodate the new law. On page seventy-six, Item five and Items nine, those are new. The green sheet also refers to one of the new laws, AB eleven fifty-six, encourages the inclusion of bullying prevention strategies in comprehensive safety plans. We have a separate policy on Safe Schools Plans, which is BP oh four five oh, which we will bring before the board at a future date to update that as well, to accommodate the new law, the new language. So this is here for a first read.
Good. Any questions on that?
Questions, comments? Consent? Somebody?
Nope.
Consent is fine.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Item in thirty-four, Board Policy Fifty-One Thirty-One Point Two, Bully.
Again, as indicated before, in response to the new legislation, if you please take a look at page eighty-one, it defines cyberbullying, which we have experienced in our schools. On page eighty-two, it describes what the law asks us to do in preventing bullying, in terms of programs at schools and information for parents and students. Again, these are revisions to current policy to respond to the new law.
What are we doing at the high school on this front? For preventing this kind of thing?
Can I ask Mr. Jordan to answer that?
When the new law came out, it came on the books January one. We did some general training with kids, just on that this law is now in effect. But I think part of the cyberbullying, as the Board policy reflects, happens off-campus. And allows us to encourage folks to gather that information and bring it to us if, and then we make a determination whether it's going to cause a disruption at school. Sometimes that's not the case. We're fortunate to have a police officer on campus, and we're able to use the police officer, if necessary, to really try to quell problems that might be happening out in cyberspace. So part of it is just the increasing the knowledge of the kids, that this is an area that we now have a law in place to support our ability to squish some of the problems that might be coming up. And then using the resources we have available to us. It is really work that we had been doing prior, because those issues were coming up, and having the law in place has helped us. Because we now have that in place, and we can pursue it. And so a big part of it was just awareness that the law is now there, and we have a little bit more teeth.
It just seems like with the, all of the social networks and the things that are going on now, that at some point in the future, it would be like a class at high school, or maybe a club or something, that really starts, that really gives some kids some education on exactly what it's doing to them, into their lives. I think a lot of kids are finding out that, you know, they're putting things on here, and then they're not getting jobs. They're not getting into colleges, because they're putting harmful things out there that, and I don't think it's a realization that a lot of kids have, that that's a, it's a really, it can be a good tool, but also can be very harmful to them. And what they say about other people, you know. So I don't know, it just seems like in the future, I can see it being something that might even be a class in a school, some kind of technology class that goes over, you know, what's appropriate and what this means, what it really means, what you're really doing.
One of the things that we can certainly look into, that I have actually done in the past, is actually doing a parent and student awareness night, where we bring in some outside presenters, generally from law enforcement, where we invite the parents to come with their kids, and provide a training on some of the long-term impacts that can happen from cyberbullying, or sexting, or anything that happens to be along those lines. And I think it does help out quite a bit, and it gives an opportunity for the parents that want to be very involved in their children's lives online, an opportunity to sit down with them and go through the training together, and we can certainly look into that.
I'd like to see that, too.
Sure.
Is there a mechanism established for receiving complaints about bullying? Each teacher charged with hearing something and doing something about it? What is the procedures that you're establishing?
Very similar to the procedure that we have in place now for any kind of bullying or harassment. Either a verbal message to us, or something in writing, and then we start looking into the issue. It's really no, cyberbullying is no different, really, than the bullying that's happening in place in terms of how kids or parents get information to us. And then we pursue it just like we would otherwise. The nice thing about cyberbullying is that, like Susan is saying, is that it exists. And it has made it, in some ways, easier for us to pursue some issues, because it's out there. Unlike bullying that might be happening on the playground or something.
How many times would you say last year this happened?
In terms of specific to cyberbullying, I would say somewhere between seven and ten times we got into...
Maybe once a month during the school year or so, on average, you have an issue with it. So it's not a huge problem, but it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
Correct. But in terms of what the social networks do and other issues, I mean, we're, I would say we're probably on Facebook or something, maybe once a week at the most, something comes up and the information is there. And so it's, in some ways, is a good resource for us, and allows us to deal with issues that in the past have been somewhat hidden.
Interesting. When I was a high school principal, I actually had, on two separate occasions, students create a Facebook page for me. So I was a victim of cyberbullying. So, yeah, so I was a victim of cyberbullying. Well?
Shall we bring this back for consent?
I'm not going to comment on that.
I hear consent.
Yes, consent.
Item in thirty-five, Board Policy fifty-one forty-five point three, non-discrimination slash harassment.
And the last of these three new revised policies has to do with harassment. As the green sheet explains, that it adds language prohibiting retaliation against students who file a complaint or report. It requires related training of students, parents, guardians, and employees. As you know, Lori Alexander is our Director for Child Welfare and Attendants. She and I have talked about this, and we're going to be contacting the Sonoma County Office of Education. Lynn Garrick has been utilized in the past for information and training of this nature. We'll be arranging training in the future to make sure that we become more aware when there's harassment occurring, as the policy indicates that we should. So I did not highlight any specific pieces of language. Much of this is revised to accommodate the new requirements. And the policy that we're recommending is what you see in front of you.
Consent? Item in thirty-six, Transitional Kindergarten.
This one, I have a very brief presentation. There are two items on your agenda, having to do with transitional kindergarten. One is to give you some information about the program, and the other is to consider policy. So there is a very short PowerPoint designed to answer some questions.
Just a note, Paul, we're going to be watching because you didn't have to ask me to change a slide once during your presentation. So let's see if you can handle that with Rich.
It has to do with the cues, doesn't it? We thought it might be a good idea to give a very brief overview to try to explain transitional kindergarten. And there are some handouts here for the members of the audience as well. So I'm going to try to be from a sky-high perspective, looking down a broad overview. It's a three-year phase-in transitional kindergarten. As you can see, what the slide indicates is that the law has required us to implement transitional kindergarten over the next three years. For the first year, which is this current year, twelve thirteen, a child now, and this is new, now must be five years old by November first. Because in all prior years, what we grew up with, we knew that a child had to be five years old by December first. And now, November first, next year, they'll have to be five by October first. The following year, they'll have to be five by September first. Transitional kindergarten, it is the first year of a two-year kindergarten program. And it is designed during that first year to use modified curriculum as age and developmentally appropriate. Because the children going in are four years old, and they're very immature. And the curriculum is intended to be responsive to the needs of those very young or immature children, who oftentimes, we have found, are not quite ready for the regular kindergarten. And the next two slides attempt to illustrate the difference between the transitional kindergarten year and the regular kindergarten year. As you see, yeah, it's fun to kind of go back and forth. Let's go back there. First of all, we'll start out with the transitional, the other one. There, thank you. First year, the emphasis on language, communication, social, and emotional issues. Very big letters, and in small letters down there, decoding and number sense. Now, in a regular kindergarten, whoops, go back.
We need to go back.
Back.
There you go.
Okay. In a regular kindergarten, you're going to find, in the big, bold capital words there, capital letters, decoding and number sense. And in the smaller letters, language, communication, social, emotional. So that just basically tries to illustrate the shift and the difference. And it is really giving kids the gift of time, the gift of time to get better prepared for kindergarten. And it is really exciting. We've had the four teachers at our elementary schools already getting prepared during the summer, and they're really excited, even though it's going to be a difficult task. They're going to be taking on a combination TKK.
Will all of our schools have a TKK then?
Yes. The way that we're planning to open the school year, we've had a heart-to-heart conversation with our principals, and they have come before cabinet unanimously that it is better this year that we open with combination TKK at each of the four schools. And I personally believe that one of the reasons is that it was so late in the year that the governor's budget allowed transitional kindergarten to go forward, that up until late, up until recently, we really didn't know exactly what we were going to do. We were planning conservatively, and I think we did the right thing. So we have four teachers who have been identified as designated to be the TKK combo class teachers.
I just want to jump in at that point for just a second and talk about the conversation that we had about that. The four elementary principals came in, and I asked for them to really plant their flag in a direction that they thought was the best direction to go for transitional kindergarten. We had the option of actually creating one transitional kindergarten at Lafayette for some circumstances we'll talk about in just a minute, and have all the students bus from the other schools to there. And there's some strong arguments to do that. And there's also some very strong and compelling arguments to keep the combination classes with TK and Kinder there. And after a lot of conversations, we decided that it would be best for the students to have the combination classes at the four sites. Keep them at the sites with their siblings, keep them in their neighborhood schools, so they're close to home, close to siblings, close to their parents. And if you live very close to the school, would never be on a bus at all. But as we look down the road and start talking about what we're going to do in the future with combination classes, and start having the conversation about creating overflow schools, most likely will, and also with the additional month of birth dated kids that will be involved in the transitional Kinder program, we believe we'll have two classes of TK next year. And with the overflow program, that'll probably be best served to have individual transitional Kinder classes at each one of those sites that is focused specifically on transitional Kinder. Because we believe educationally, it's probably the most sound, not probably, it is the most sound way to have those kids on a specific curriculum in front of a specific teacher. And that will create some transitions for parents, and it'll create some busing things that some of these young kids will need to do. But I believe that they'll all be ready to do that, and it'll fit into, like we talked about, the overflow program of what our plan is to eliminate combination classes next year, the fall of thirteen.
So with our combo TKKs that we have this next year, what is the makeup of the classes?
Next slide? Thank you, that was a good idea.
So actually, before we go to the next slide, can we go back just one slide? Because I want to speak just philosophically for a second about transitional kindergarten and give my two cents on this. If I have a child that's born on December third, are they eligible for transitional Kinder?
Yes.
December third?
Oh, you said December.
December third, yes.
Oh, I thought you said November.
Nope, December third. Okay, so just because my child is one day later, my child will never have the opportunity to be in a transitional Kinder class. And that's something different than the cutoff for a Kinder class. If my child is born on any date, they'll always be eligible to have a full year of kindergarten class. So really, what this program does is it individualizes this year the students born in the month of November, the following year, the month of October, the following year, the month of September, and provides an additional year of education for those three months of students. So basically, one quarter of our population are going to get an additional year of transitional kindergarten. Philosophically speaking, from my perspective, I think the state is making a mistake with this in the transitional kindergarten program. Because I think we're providing an additional year of education only to a select few students. And I think if it's a good program, we should provide the program for all students, and we should provide the state funding for all students. And so just philosophically speaking, I'm disappointed that we ended up with a transitional kindergarten like this. If the state wants to support it, they should support it for all kids. If the state doesn't want to support it for all kids, then let's have the date cut off for kindergarten and have them enter kindergarten when they're ready, so.
It's also kind of arbitrary, because my daughter was a November twenty-ninth baby, but she was totally willing and ready for regular kindergarten. And then my son was a May baby, and he was probably too young at five years, three months, to start kindergarten.
And there actually really is, and kindergarten teachers that are out there will testify this. There's generally a difference between the young boys and young girls and their readiness for kindergarten. And this has no account for that. I mean, there's no way to really account for that. You have to draw the line in the sand someplace. It's just, it just seems like a real interesting process. What they did with this was originally supposed to be a budget-saving measure. And it really is no budget-saving measure at all, because we still have these kids in our school. We're still collecting the same revenue limit for these kids. From philosophically, from saving teachers' jobs, I think it's fantastic. Because I hate to lose teachers, because California is changing the rules for Kinder, because that's what would happen as we transitioned it in. So that's the positive side of this, is it saves teachers' jobs. But just philosophically speaking, from the educational perspective, it's just kind of a strange proposition. And I think that's why Governor Brown took the stance that he did on transitional Kinder.
So if, what you're saying, if I understand it correctly, because like he was saying, if you have a child that isn't quite ready, you know, so if your child is born on December third, but you don't feel like they're quite ready for kindergarten, and like right now, a lot of parents will say, well, I'm just going to wait and have them go next year. You don't have the option of saying, I'm going to take that transitional year and then go the next year. They have to meet that requirement by the month that they're born to get that transitional year.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. If we use December second as a date, the parent with a child born on December second has the option of sending their child to transitional kindergarten. They don't have to if they don't want to, but they can. The parent that has their born, their son born on December third does not have the option of transitional Kinder and has to wait a full year to where their child is almost ready to turn six before they can enter into kindergarten. So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
So then they don't get the two.
You did do a certain, but I guess what I was saying is a parent can't, if they don't meet that criteria, a parent can't say, I want my kid to have that transitional year for a year, and then go to kindergarten.
That is correct.
They can only be in it if they meet the exact month's birthday requirements.
For this year, their child has to be born on November second to December second, on one of those dates in there. And if they're not born on one of those dates in there, they have no option to go to transitional kindergarten. And here's another interesting piece about transitional Kinder, too, is if your child is born between November second and December second, goes into kindergarten, and you have a child, like Trustee Fullerton was just talking about, that is ready to move on, it doesn't matter how well they do in their transitional Kinder class. They can't skip kindergarten and go to first grade, even if they're ready. They have to go into a kindergarten class. I mean, technically, they could, but the district is not allowed to collect any ADA, I should clarify this, until their sixth birthday. So if they're, they would get, we would provide an education to them with no revenue coming into the district until they turned six sometime between November and December.
Moving to the last slide, and here are some more handouts. Those are just for your general information, things that parents are picking up at the front desk when they register. So the last slide here shows a general projection. Shows that we're accommodating between twenty to twenty-five this year. And actually, we have, Lori has provided me with up-to-date information. Four scheduled for Washington, six enrolled at Lafayette, six enrolled at Grant, two at Alice Burney. And there are three still waiting to be placed, so for a total of twenty-one for transition kindergarten at this time. Next year, as Fred mentioned, two classes will be set up to serve students district-wide. And the following year, we would anticipate three students, I mean, three classes set up to serve students district-wide.
And they'll all be combo?
No, the, in, this is the only year that it would be a TKK combo. The next, after this, starting out next year, they will be self-contained, all TK kids in each of the TK classes.
So technically speaking, this year, we have four TK classes. They're combo classes, but there is four different TK classes across the district. Next year, we will go to two non-combo classes. The following year, most likely, no, two in the district.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to get.
Yes.
So some kids would have to be bused.
That is correct. But they would be bused only from the feeder school above them. So they'd only be bused from one site to the next. As opposed to, if we did it this year, we could have the potential, if Lafayette was where we were actually talking about it, a student that was at Burney being bused from Burney to Wash, or excuse me, Burney to Grant to pick up more students, and then to Lafayette. So they could be on the bus for, you know, fifteen minutes or so. Where next year, we're talking about a five-minute bus drive.
Okay.
And I'm thinking historically that kindergarten was not a mandatory grade for many years. Is kindergarten now mandatory, and is transition kindergarten mandatory?
Neither are mandatory.
I was also asked to bring some information about kindergarten enrollment. I know this is not exactly on the topic, but to update everyone on kindergarten registration.
Actually, it is on the topic, because I just want to make sure we're clear, because we don't want to have a Brown Act violation. It is on the topic, because we want to talk about how TK enrollment has affected our Kinder enrollment, so.
That, okay, good, thank you. That impact is that we need to figure out how to accommodate the children who are eligible for transition kindergarten. And it has an impact on the other classes at each of the schools. That was part of our decision. And the information that we've gathered is that we now have two-hundred-and-sixty children enrolled in kindergarten. We have capacity at each of our schools with our current classrooms and teachers, which includes the TK, capacity of two-hundred-and-sixty-four. So right now, today, we have space for four more children to walk in the door who want to get into kindergarten. Unfortunately, we actually have twenty-eight that are waiting for placement. So we are going to.
Actually, I prefer to think of that as fortunately.
Yeah, there you go. It's good to have more. So fortunately, we have twenty-eight more to place. We are going to have to create another kindergarten classroom.
So we're able.
Paul's over here rubbing his hands.
Everybody to be up, that would be good.
Yeah, this is one of those push-and-pull situations. We are creating a new Kinder class, but unfortunately, we will be doing that by collapsing another K-six class, or one-sixth class in the district. So we have an existing teacher that we're going to be, I don't want to get in too much detail, because I don't want to get too far ahead of the principal and having the conversation, but we'll be doing it with existing staff to make this happen.
So item in thirty-seven, Board Policy sixty-one seventy-one point one, Transitional.
So can I ask one more question? Because when I asked about the makeup of the class, I meant the specific classes, like the four TKs that we have going right now. How many students are in them, and how many are kindergartners, and how many are transitional kindergartners?
Yes, the numbers are at Washington. So our class size limit for kindergarten is twenty-four. And at Washington, we have four TK, and that means twenty are going to be regular K. Lafayette has six TK, and that's all in one class. We have, because we have four teachers designated to be the TKK teachers. Lafayette, six, Grant, six, Alice Burney, two. So that's how it.
So it's a pretty small number of the TK kids.
Consent in thirty-seventh is also on TK. That question was relevant for this.
And they will have the same day, school day, as the regular kindergarten.
That is correct.
Yeah. So that's going to be.
They'll have a modified curriculum to the Kinder kids.
Yeah, that's going to be interesting for like two kids.
So I'd like to speak to the next agenda item, which is Adoption of Board Policy six-one-seven-oh point one, Transitional Kindergarten. In order to implement the transitional kindergarten. Transitional Kindergarten. In order to implement the transitional kindergarten program, we are required to have a policy. And this is the policy, which is a model from CSBA, which essentially outlines the things that we were just discussing. Any questions?
Consent?
Consent.
So, we'll be moving to, back to closed session. Is there any to discuss?
And just if you could call the attention that we'll be continuing the study session as well from prior to the meeting to discuss specifically how board policy updates are delivered to the board.
Yes, that too. And we'll be discussing items E5, E6, and E7 also. Any public comment on those closed-session items? Okay, we are not adjourned. We are closing. Closed session. I guess we're going to have it back in there again.
Enjoy your guys' circle jerk.
So, were you told you couldn't let your children play?
Yeah, gave me a ticket to boot. I don't know what I've...